Okay. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 5th, 2002, Planning Commission meeting. This meeting hopefully will be recorded or on Zoom at some point. As usual, the Planning Commission will receive the applicants, discuss, and from that point we'll take questions from the audience and then online. I'd like to open up, I'd like to nominate Rich Jordan for Vice Chair for the last three months of this year. Do I have any other nominations or a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Rich, for filling in for us for the next three months. Okay, then next on the agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the July 6th, 2002 meeting?
July 6th, July 7th. Is it July 6th or July 7th? The one says July 7th. The agenda says 6th, 7th.
Okay, July 7th. That's the first correction right there.
It's right on the minute, so the agenda. The minutes are good, minutes are good.
All right. And no additions or additions or corrections? So do I have an yeah, a motion to accept?
So move.
I have a second?
Well, second, Ben.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and tonight we will be hearing from downtown area school district, East High School, 50 Devon Drive, preliminary final land development plan discussion. Go ahead.
Good evening, folks. My name's Dale Lawver. I'm the Director of Facilities for the Downingtown Area School District. We were before you, I believe, last spring, and we told you a little bit about a project that we would be working on at the Downingtown East High School on 50 Devon Drive. We've been working with Tara, Scott, Dan, and just some getting some background information and telling them what we're doing and kind of so it's not a shock to them when they would see it. And we've been hashing out some things maybe before we even get to this point, so we weren't going down the wrong path. And as fact, in fact, this week even, we had another little meeting and about some improvements will be done to Devon Drive as part of this project also, and I'll let, we'll talk about that when our consultants speak to you about that. We're going to overview kind of everything that we're doing and get you up to speed with everything. And then we've had review letters from all the consultants from the township. We'll touch on a lot of those points, but probably not hit every point this meeting, but we'll be back again and but we hope we can accomplish as much as we can. And also probably our civil engineer, Justin, will work with Dan off scenes and try to work out some things to smooth things along, keep the process moving along as fast as we can. I just want to make some introductions tonight for the folks that are here. You'll be seeing them a couple of times while we go through this whole process. Jay Cluff is our architect for the project from KCBA Architects. Justin Brewer is here from DL How. He's our civil engineer for the project. And Greg Richardson is here from Traffic and Planning and Design. He'll be helping us with all the traffic issues involved in this. We have a couple of other people that be signed scenes with some other professional things, but they won't, they're not really at this level of the thing here. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Jay and he'll lead you through where we're at so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we were before you a few months ago, but I'll give a just a quick overview. And then we'll get into specifics to address the comments from the consultant letters that you had sent in forward to us. But just to bring back the whole basis of why we're here tonight. The Downingtown area school district in both high schools, east and west, but we're here to talk about east, is going to move their curriculum to what's called a lunch and learn. And in that lunch and learn hour, the entire school will stop for one hour. And in that hour, there'll be options, one of which courses to eat, but most high school kids don't need an hour to eat. There will be a lot of different activities. You can get to see a counselor. You can hang out with your friends. You can have some kind of a group. Long and the short of it, when you have higher school of about eighteen hundred students and staff eating lunch and lunch, you need space. Expensive to do and not use that space other times. The second thing that came out of the pandemic, interesting educational changes evolved out of that is blended learning. So in lieu of being in a classroom five days a week, students are project oriented in these big spaces that we're creating. And they during the week would be in, say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and another group Tuesday, Thursday in class, then they would be out doing project based learning. So these are kind of, for want of a better term, like a college commons, you probably would be able to figure that out. It's, 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 it's a place that's high in technology. It's a place where individual learning can take place, and it's a place where group learning can take place. We are not adding students, nor are we adding, it's interesting, we're not adding staff. We are taking staff that would be half time. There are several of those, and they now will become full time. But that's basically what this is the core of it. So if we take a look, and probably most interest to everybody here, we're going to try to clean up some of the traffic flow while we're here. And again, I'm going to leave a lot of that to which we need to get when we get set far down the line. But basically, while we're doing the lunch and learn and the blended learning spaces, it's a nice opportunity to try to fix that circulation and make things better. So real quick, as a quick overview, the major addition to the building is on the end of the building. It has some classrooms, but by and large it has open space for that blended learning we talked about. There is a courtyard that is currently open as this one is. This one will remain open. The one next to it will be enclosed. And that courtyard will be used for a learning stair and for there'll be a concession for if you're going to feed that many people at once, you have to spread out the areas in the school where you feed them. So there will be a concession for want of a better term, a remote food serving area, not cooking, but serving area, and kind of a two story connection here in the middle. Also, as an alternate, we're seeing how the budget allows this. We're at least in front of you, master planning for an auxiliary gym down in the corner. So those are the really, and we're adding some toilet rooms in the middle. The building needs more toilets than it has now. And it's been wanting for toilets for quite a while, so that this is a nice opportunity to clean up kind of those issues. Those are the really four building pieces, but really the bigger issue with the planning commission is site circulation. So terrible, let's back up and go to the one that the existing circulation with the arrows. All right, so no, that's what we're going to do. Is that all you have, Justin? Is that? Okay, so what happens now? And you guys probably know it better than I do, is a one way flow around the building and out again. And going around the building and out again, you mix buses and cars. And what happens is the queue lines get kind of gummed up because there's not enough room to pass, so you have to wait until everybody gets sorted out to get out. Also, this intersection is kind of challenging because it's a big sea of asphalt and really kind of is tough to negotiate. So as our proposal, and again, we'll get it more in detail as far as the specifics relative to traffic, is to one, rebuild the intersection, put the buses totally around back. They would come, make a bus loop, come back out again and go back. So the buses are now separated. The parents, and this is, I think, we're going to gain a lot, that queue line now would go all the way down around. They would come across here, go all the way down to a gate where the gate exists frankly, and we'll keep the gate. And that was actually part of the conditional use approval to do this twenty years ago. And we're maintaining all those conditional use conditions as we were supposed to. But back to my point, we come around, this is all stackable, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet of stacked vehicles that we can stack on site and drop off at the main door and then go out. This intersection is free flow in, and it is monitored by a a security resource officer, a school employee, to try to kind of help speed that up. There are some ancillary parking here, but that's really not in play. It really is, the big push is the buses and the, the buses in the back and the parents in the front. All student parking is down the hill. We're not making any changes to that. Anything that you see up in this area is all staff parking, different people in different areas. Trying to get to the front door, it's always bothered me a lot that you have to go by the dumpsters and the athletics and all that stuff to get there. So we are going to make a very pronounced, again, we were in front of you a couple of years ago with Euclid Hills Elementary School. Those have been by there would recognize this format. The sidewalk comes down between the buses and the cars, provides a huge amount of drop off area all at once. And it access the front door. So we will be doing that again. And from a fire safety point, we had this discussion will come up in your letters. Yes, there is an emergency access across here that would be used. We can use it after hours or we can use it for emergency only. We would give the, we're working out what's the specifics of how that works. But basically, the emergency people, whether they be fire police or EMS, would have access so they could use that in emergency. So we, if we need to get in and out of there. Those of you that have been there know that this back is kind of troublesome. There's a lot of things that are parked in the way. There's a pinch park, pinch point with a loading dock back here. There's just a lot of stuff that's really kind of challenging. So what we're proposing to do is one, we're easing this curve. That, that because if you're going to take what was one way and make it two way, we need to give adequate turning radiuses. We're cleaning up this intersection, which is really a minor thing. This is just field maintenance access, but cleaning that up. Widening the entire back to thirty feet wide so that we can get adequate space. We will stripe it and we will line it. There's enough asphalt back there. The reason we can do that, we will be removing the loading dock that's there now. It doesn't work very well. And we will be putting in a loading zone on grade with a portable loading dock that actually will reside in this building, can be wheeled out. And that leaves us a nice, clear, safe path. We have eased all the turning radiuses here. There were some consultant review letters. We will make sure that we do indeed accommodate your largest fire truck. We've, we've already taken a look at buses and the like. And that should take us where we need to go. So I think that's a kind of a broad brushed overview. We had a lot of letter, I think we had eight letters where they seemed to be pretty good comments on the letters. I'm going to let Justin and the traffic engineer kind of address those. But does anybody, before I step back from the microphone, have any particular questions concerning what I just covered here?
Question? I think, and I think we talked about this last time, but can you talk to the current parking today versus the proposed on basically on the side?
Right. What happens is, right now buses are dropping off in here and we're returning that to parking. We are also adding parking down here to make up for a parking loss in front of the building. This actually is a drive aisle that exists currently. We narrowed it somewhat because it's going to be one way. But if you were to go there today, there is no parking here. And there's no parking here. So between the loss of parking here and the, and a reworking down in the bottom, we gained about forty nine parking spaces. As of today, today or after, since the school's been built, all student parking has been and will continue to be down the hill. Students do not park unless they're disabled up in the, up in this part of the parking.
Athletes park up there.
Athletes do park up there. That is correct. And again, that's another piece of the pilot we get, gets covered with this. But at the end of the day, what we're really trying to solve is the backup of queuing of people on Devon Drive trying to get around the building because they're stacked up with buses. We're trying to provide as much onsite queue length as possible to increase the number of vehicles that can be stacked on the site before they back out into the, into the Devon Drive area. But parking wise, we've added forty nine. We keep the students in the bottom. There are some specialty things that come up here as you pointed out. We have removed some parking here and placed a bus loop with radiuses to accommodate that. We'll make sure that we do satisfy everybody that we've made that the radius work for fire truck and, and any other vehicles. We've eliminated the pinch point in the back and moved the loading dock off to the side. Yes?
I have a question about the, the traffic inflow for the visitors and parents. I think there is parking on both sides at one point. And it's fairly narrow for two cars going through there.
One of the things that we're going to do, and it did not show to the plans that Dan had a look at, we've been looking at that and we concur. There isn't a front of this building about a ten foot wide sidewalk. And what we're proposing to do is cut it back to a five foot sidewalk and put five more feet in that drive aisle. The other thing I think that's bothering this, we are encouraging people not to walk along that parking lot. If you know there's a guard rail there, that guard rail takes out about three or four feet of parking lot. Your nature as a vehicle parker is you kind of come close to the rail, but you don't want to hit it. So we are going to remove the guard rail, make sure we're reworking the crosswalk, this the pedestrian circulation to encourage everybody to walk against the building and not walk on the opposite side where so they're not crossing all this traffic. And we will gain the five feet, which Dan didn't see, to be fair. It's a work in progress. We're trying to always make it better. And you'll gain the distance between the guard rail and the edge of the asphalt that is there now. The guard was kind of beat up. I don't think anybody really walks there, but we're going to make sure they don't. We don't want them to. So the two things, getting rid of the guard rail and widen and getting a narrower sidewalk, five foot is plenty adequate. And getting five more feet out in the middle to make sure that that doesn't happen. Because you're right, it's, 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 our whole goal in this thing is flow. We want it safe, and we don't want people to hesitate. And we want people to know where they're going, which by the way, one of your comments in one of the letters was wayfinding signage. I'm a big fan. We need it. You guys have been there. You, if you've been there a couple of times, I got to tell you, the first time visitor, you are totally lost. It is, it is crazy. So yes, we will put, we will take care of that.
Other questions?
Yes.
Down where the buses are, the turnaround?
Yes.
For visitors, for the lower fields and spectators, and then the the track, will there be handicap parking there to, for accessible for spectators?
Right, we, we have rights there are, are handicap spaces and here are handicap spaces. So we, and here are handicap spaces. So we have spread them out. I believe there's a couple that exist that we're keeping down in this end as well. So it's not our goal to, I think the code's pretty specific. You got to spread them out. We want to spread them out. So yes, we are doing that. We're, we're widening ever so slightly. We're saying we give up. We're not going to fight him. The band guys want to park back here, you know, the band things. We're actually going to give them a separate parking place to put them that's not in the travel lane. So they're, they're going to keep, they want to be there, they're going to be there. One thing I do want to point out because it's going to come on our comments. There is, as you know, this was a multi parcel conditional use back in two thousand, maybe nineteen ninety eight. As far as the way the district uses this space, this is Lionville Elementary School. This field is actually used by Downingtown East High School for, for their band practice. So as far as we're concerned, we consider this to be part of Downingtown. And, and so the conditional use did too. I went even broader than that. It took in, I don't know, fourteen other property, twelve or fourteen others. It's going to come out in one of the comments that you will hear addressed about buffering. We have an issue with that because we think this is actually all one contiguous use. We'll get it. I'll let somebody else handle that. But any other questions? Yes, sir.
You said your goal is flow, right?
It is.
Keeping everybody off Devon. Just looking at the way it's lined up and the traffic flow is current or your proposed traffic flow is you have at least four crossings for pedestrians to go from the middle to the school, right? They got to cross, across the, the drive, the access ways.
They're going to cross once here, I believe, from the student line.
There, across the lot that the parents can drive, or is that the faculty lot?
This is all faculty up here.
So you, they'll be in, that'll be full before the loops start.
It should be.
Shouldn't have a crossing there.
You should not have a crossing.
Only have students crossing in that way.
You definitely have a student area here, and we're talking about with the principal about again, safety officer or staff member. It exists today, frankly, whether you're coming two way or one way. Yes, that's, that exists. We've actually moved this one around to put this crossing away from the, the, the traffic flow, moved it across and across. So we want people to come around and not cross there. So I agree with you.
Okay.
There's one that we can't beat. Yes.
That's one. You have two over on the other side where apparently the athletes park.
The athletes park over here.
So they'll, they'll have to cross somewhere there. And then I'm not sure how the bus drop off works. Do they drop off into that center island?
They drop off, they drop off right here along.
Right there. So there is no crossing.
No.
So there's only two. Have you guys considered any type of like raised structure to have them walk up over?
Yeah, we, we actually, we actually had that discussion with the principal. The problem is, it's, it almost would be better if it were a tunnel. It won't do either. It drops off very, very, very steeply. I think the, because it's for a finite time twice a day, I think we're looking to try to grab it with staff. But yes, we, we, we get it. That's, that's a tough thing. And as every time somebody crosses there, that messes with the flow. A tunnel and above structure would be helpful. The great change here is probably about twenty feet. Justin can speak to that, but it's significant. So it's pretty tough to make it work. But we did put, put the cross outside here and try to get this so there's no criss, crisscross or drop off. These guys are supposed to be in there sooner. Yes, there are some miscellaneous things that happen here during the day that have to be addressed, loading and the like. But again, during the day, we're going to make the loading guys come in and go back, not cross all this stuff. It's a tough thing. I mean, if you work from scratch, it started out as a junior high and got added to, and now we're adding to it again. And you do, you deal with what you can. In an ideal world, you take out every crossing that you could. We took, we got it down to two, I think, and we're
Two's, two's good.
Two's better than four.
Definitely better than four.
All right.
What was the issue with the tunnel? Just engineering?
Grades again. It's not, it's one of those goofy things where it, it doesn't work either way. It's just like this half thing.
Okay.
Because principal was talking, you know, what can we do? We got these kids.
Yeah.
That is, that is, that's where they hang out. This is where they got to be. There's your walk.
Correct. Okay.
Anybody else? We'll turn it over. If that's done, I think, do we want any traffic next? Or you, Justin, next? What do you want to do?
Can we ask questions at this point or wait?
Let's just wait. We might get it solved with some of these other guys and gals. You want to try the letters? You want to try traffic? What do you want to do?
We can, I think we can knock traffic out.
That's cool, guys.
And if you have any questions, again, my name's Greg Richardson. I'm with Traffic Planning and Design. We do have a review letter from McMahon Associates, your traffic consultant, who did a letter in September of twenty second, I think, believe. And for the most part, we're, we will, you know, our response is we'll comply. There were two comments that we wanted to address with you tonight, and these are items that we can work through. We don't see any issues with it, but we just want to bring them up and because they're continuing items that aren't strictly, will comply. The first is, it was a comment about my work. Yeah, I got it. Right. At the intersection, the four way intersection that we have that we're going to be reconfiguring. One of the things that we showed on one, on the site plan was there was a stop bar shown here. When you come in off of Devon Drive, we showed it as being an always stop. That was an error on our part. We do not want to stop those vehicles, so that's going to be free flow. So therefore, the, the comment was that they questioned doing all this, all these improvements, and you're going to create a, a problem here. You're supposed to be fixing the problems, not creating more problems. So that was a mistake on our part. So we're going to fix that on the site plans, and we're going to address that accordingly in, in our response. The next comment was that we are, we're, we're going to walk, work through with your, your traffic consultant and your staff is the, the request for us to do some traffic counts out there. What we're looking at potentially doing is, yeah, we would do the traffic counts. But what we would like to do is, is see how the improvements work. And if we see that there's any issues that are created by, you know, the new patterns or anything, we would be agreeable to potentially doing a what we call post construction study, which is basically, let's compare what's out there now. We'll look at the queues at the intersections, you know, see how far it's backing out. We know at times it potentially backs out onto Devon Drive. And therefore, we want to document that. So we would be agreeable to that. We just don't see the value in until we, we know what the problems are. We see it every day. You guys see it every day. So we'd like to do that study, be agreeable to doing whatever, putting money in escrow to cover the cost for doing a traffic study afterwards, if that's agreeable to staff and
So you will be doing a pre and a post or?
Well, we're going to do what we would have to do to be able to compare the post.
Yeah.
We got to have a baseline. So
So you are going to do before construction.
Right. So we would do, yes. And so we were looking, we even discussed that today. We're potentially, we want to get you know, do these intersection counts that we have that are being requested of us, do that now before it goes to construction. And then we'll have that, let that sit in our back pocket, do the construction, do the work, and then compare it. And then you can see, hopefully, you know, we won't have to see it, do a study, but we will be willing to, to do that for, to make a commitment to do that kind of, you know, study afterwards. And then other than that, again, everything, all the other comments are, will comply. Yes, sir.
Is that study pre-seasonal? I mean, there definitely seems to be a different population, more drop offs with parents towards winter. So I just wonder if that is going to affect the study or if you'll consider hitting it at a time when you expect there to be a different kind of population coming in.
Well, it, again, we got
Worst case scenario would actually be the best time to do the study, but then you'd want to have the pre and the post at that same time point.
Yeah, we want to compare apples to apples. And now we're getting into the cooler, cooler weather, the temperatures, you're going to probably see more parents dropping their kids off or so I think we're at the very good time of the season. You don't want to, certainly, we don't want to do counts when it snows. Because I think you will get a false, well, first of all, school might not be open, but, but there'll be no more school days for kids, you know, that's the, I hear that lament now. It's like, I gotta work from home now. So
Upstream.
So yeah, that, that's a good point. We were even talking about that is what time of the year we do it. And we would agree, well, we could talk to Dean Kaiser at McMahon and make sure he's okay with us doing the counts. We were looking at possibly doing in the next few weeks. We want to try to get them done before the holidays and before any kind of construction takes place.
Gregor, with regards to the study here, I guess our concern, our concern here is, is that the study and, and of course, I'm not the traffic engineer, but your study basically, if your study comes out now that you need to do something more, I mean, you have your approvals, you're done. You don't have, the township doesn't necessarily have the leverage to come back to him and say, hey, this is what we want something done in addition to what, what's, what's, what's being proposed in the land development. So opposed, I mean, escrowing for a study to be done afterwards doesn't address the concerns that the township may or may not have with regards to traffic. So I, I just don't, I think that was where at least the township stood on this from, from, from our earlier discussions. Yeah, we don't, we don't know what the study, study is going to show. And therefore, if you do it post, post construction here, is like you're already through the land development process. So, and we don't know if it's going to warrant to come back and say, hey, we need something else done.
I hear you, Dan. And the, the district is committed to either putting up an escrow account, whatever the township thinks is sufficient. Then we'll do the improvements. We're not going anywhere. The other thing I want the, the planning commission also know is that the district in the early discussions, as early as this week, that we had, we're committed to possibly to seeing, and they're going to do the design here now that we're on this track, to do a raised medial island in, on Devon Drive just down the road towards the intersection one thirteen and another and up near the intersection of the Y, which will create a pinch point in the road, which is a traffic calming type of feature. And also it's increases, increases the safety factor because you will get an island if you're a pedestrian crossing Devon Drive. So you can look one way, cross one lane, then look the other way and cross another. It gives you a point of safety out in the middle. So we're committed to doing that already. They're going to start on that design right away on that. Um, right away on that. We got to get some survey and stuff done on Devon Drive out there. So I mean, we're all, we're already committing to making some traffic improvements and things. And then. Uh, we wanted to see, because we're going to get all this traffic off of Devon Drive. That's a no stopper, free flow in. That was the whole idea of the design to get. Get them in, get them around. We can hold them. Uh, we can stack a lot of cars and on our lots and the buses get free flowing. That's what's also causing the problem there. So. That was kind of where we were going with this because it's kind of um. What you see today won't be what you see when it's done. And we were thinking a traffic study might not be indicative of what. The road design is if you do one now because it's going to change. So you. Things will change and the flow will change and the the speed of the traffic will change. A lot of things will change. From between pre-construction and post-construction and we're, the district is fine with putting up an escrow account or whatever you.
I I I think I think it's something we need to consult with with McMahon about and talk with staff and you guys about offline. These are our opinion here at this at this stage of the game. So. I I mean, I we understand your request um, to do that and uh, we can, we can have further dialogues about it. Um, I I know the uh, base upon internal discussions that we've had, they felt strongly about having one done now. But we're happy to ha- happy to have that open dialogue with you about it. And uh, we'll come back with a recommendation for the planning commission. On what we think from a staff point of view here and a consultant point of view, what should be done.
Okay. On that issue. Yeah, my question, that would be after it's all done. Then we got to come up with a whole new plan of what to do with traffic if this didn't work, right?
But the traffic, I'm afraid.
That's okay, I'm just trying.
I think it would be a supplemental. We we've done what we can on our site, then it starts to, I believe, like we start to back up.
Yeah, I think the point is that the comment was to gather the information and analyze the intersection. And I th- my opinion and our opinion is that. We don't need to analyze the intersections at this point. Because we know what the issues are. It's the interaction between the vehicles. And we believe what we're proposing is going to solve that problem. However. Things can change, driving patterns can change, busing patterns can change. But what we're doing is trying to solve the problem. Every one of the schools that I work on, I I'm doing a job with Conestoga right now. It's gridlock. They park, double park on the public roads. So every high school, every elementary school, every media, middle school, they all have the same problem. So. This is a really, and my my viewpoint is a um. Huge improvement when you can separate the vehicle types. Now, they still mix again here at the intersection and when they're exiting. But the greatest is the when the parents are circling around slowly, dropping off the parent kids. The buses get in and out, you know, in the morning, afternoon, they'll stack up, which but they're not causing any congestion. So what we're we're getting back to the study, I I don't mean to digress, but. What we were saying was that we would like to do the traffic data collection. Then, you know, hold that stuff. At least we'd have it now. This is the time to do it. We don't, we can't wait after construction starts. So we would do that. If it's a matter of doing the analysis now, I don't think we're gonna. You know, really say, hey, that's a deal breaker. You know, it 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 is, because we already have the data collection. So I think what Dan, you're saying is, yeah, you could do that. We'll agree. Do you want to do a pre-study? But what's going to happen if there's a problem out there afterwards? And I could tell you that the school district, you know, I I'm not going to spend their money or anything like that, but. Uh, they're going to, if there's a problem out there, they're going to have to solve it because if it's a safety problem or a increased congestion. We might be back before you to do another improvement, you know, internally. So um, I think that's the best way to handle it. My my opinion, um, certainly you guys hold the cards here, if you want to call that so.
I have a question. I mean.
Yes, sir.
Best to try to figure out if we have a problem ahead of time. So we can solve it the first time.
Well, we know we have a problem and that's what we're trying to solve.
Do this and there's still a problem. They're saying, oh, yeah, we're gonna have to come back and fix it, but. If we can do the study to help explore whether or not this will work.
What what you're going to get with a study is we're going to do a capacity analysis. Okay, it's going to tell you that it fails out there. We know it fails out there.
Today.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. The only thing that we will get out of this that we think that will be useful is how far does cars back up and then back on the Devon Drive? That's my opinion is that's going to be the greatest amount of information that you're going to get now. There's a now, there's no analysis for that. That's observation.
That's right.
Yeah.
My proposal for analysis to come out of that and tell me if you disagree, but we've heard all about how by moving the buses and the cars separately from each other. It creates all this space for cars to stack. So that'll help keep them off of Devon Drive. But if we know today that the combination of cars and buses and then we'll know the quantities of them under a given amount of time stretches this far. You can take that length of backup, put it, loop it around the new plan and see where it goes.
Right.
And if it's still way down Devon Drive, then you know, we need to completely revisit it again.
I I don't disagree with you. I I I what I'm trying to say is the analysis that you do now is not going to serve you any purpose. Cause you're, what you would do is you do the analysis based on the conditions that are out there. And this, these are the same improvements that we would have implemented regardless of what. Counts say or what the, because they see it on a daily basis, you see it on a daily basis. We see that this is one way to solve the problem. The purpose of the post-development study is to confirm that, let's say this backs up. Out onto Devon and it backs up like twenty five cars or something like that. The post-development study will show us that. First of all, observation will tell you whether it's working or would also will tell you that. Whether this is actually backing up now. Is it like two or three cars? It shouldn't back up at all because. It's free flow at that point. The the choke point is here is when you get vehicles that are trying to turn left. And today they're they're all going like this. So they are all in the in the conflict here is this starts to back up. These people start to stop and let give people courtesy gaps. So they that ends up. You know, you know, backing vehicles up with the ability for the parents to come in now and make a right turn as opposed to going straight across. You're going to remove that courtesy gap, you know, is if you're not sure what a courtesy gap is when. You know, yeah, okay, but um, the, so that's going to eliminate that and it's going to make it more free flow. Around the site, keep things moving as opposed to being stagnant around in here. On these sitting here and then sitting here when people value to turn out.
I think the issue is that it. This, the proposal, we believe is going to be better. We just don't know if it's going to be better enough.
How much?
How much better?
Right.
Right.
Well, there's no other, we don't have any other plan on the table though that we don't know. So we, this is the best.
Right.
Best plan they've been able to come up with. We can, we don't have any other suggestions. So.
You know, if we take the the number of vehicles that need to come in. Over this forty five minutes or however much time it is. And figure that all out. If we already, i- if we do that, we know we're we're still going to have a problem. Then maybe we should try to find something more to do.
My question is, and I I missed the initial presentation package a lot. And maybe this question's already been asked. Can you stack? And first of all, how many buses come into this school at dismissal time? Do we know that?
We know that. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think we need to know that. And then the next thing my my question is, how many buses can we stack on that incoming lane? Because I have seen buses all the way out on Devon. All the way down to Whitford and down Whitford as far as Allen Drive. In the two hundred thirty to the proper ever dismissal time that I've seen and you're and I've taken exception. With your, this doesn't create any congestion because it does. And that's my question. I'm I'm more concerned about the buses than so much than the car.
Right.
I think we need to know how many buses are coming. How many we can stack in here and can we get them off the road or publicly or not?
Right. Well, I think the the issue here is really, again, the, you know, the drop offs. And, you know, I don't disagree with anything you said. Okay, I it, we know there's congestion. That's why we're here tonight. Uh, in addition to the expansion of the building itself, we wanted to. While we were doing this work, we wanted to try to solve a problem that's been, it's a, you know. Stick in everyone's crawl, you know, because of the fact that, you know, it. It is congestion, it does back up and we're trying to come up with a solution. Again, i- i- if if the township is adamant about doing this analysis, I don't think there's any reason why. We would push back on that, but we are at least going to take the first step. We'll coordinate with Dean Kaiser and McMahon and make sure that we're the time of year that we're doing the counts. Again, uh, we're kind of up against it with the timing of the school and. When construction starts and things like that. So we need to get these counts done sooner than later. And we would like to get them done before the holidays too. So, okay, yes, sir.
Any consideration given to having a traffic light on Devon Drive, um, so they don't have one bus stop? You you have that same courtesy. Situation. Wouldn't that help flow if you had a traffic light on Devon?
Um. Potentially, but in my opinion, PennDOT is not going to approve a signal.
So that would be a.
Forty minutes of the day is like twenty minutes, probably a half hour in the morning, half hour in the evening. Um, probably more of a benefit in the evening when they leave en masse.
Um, so that's, that would be a PennDOT decision.
Yeah, even though Devon is a township road and the driveway, of course, is a private property. PennDOT has jurisdiction on any electronic devices such as traffic signals.
Cause that would, that would contribute to the, what Charlie's talking about on Devon Drive pushing back towards Whitford.
That would help with the. The outgoing, everyone will just be backed up in the driveway and then that'll get gridlocked. The intersection, right?
Right. See, everything's, yeah, I think more than with this plan, I think it's fine. Except where you where you come to Devon, you still have that same. Three way stop. Everybody's stopping and waiting to turn.
Yeah, I.
But it definitely improves it on this side of, you know, over here. I I think this, I think this plan works. I I just not sure how how it's going to work out on Devon. You'll probably see a lot of improvement, but. Still some congestion because.
That's the question is, I think it improves the flow, but doesn't improve it enough.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where, I guess I just don't know where they go with with this though with.
They're in the loop. There's more cars.
No, I know. I mean, I I, you know, if 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 they don't adopt this plan, what?
No, I agree.
What else? What else I can?
Right. If this doesn't work, then what do you do?
With your proposed improvements and like, you know, traffic that we know are issues and okay, if we. You know, go buses and cars and don't don't mix them. Like, is it a twenty five percent improvement? Like, can you even say that at this point that this proposal gives us twenty five percent better flow? Or twenty five percent less cars on Devon? We have any kind of estimate in that regard at all? Or is that how you calculate this?
Well, see, that's the the analyses themselves. I mean, if you were to do a traditional traffic study. Like we would analyze the intersections along Route one thirteen. Typically, you count the volumes, you run it through a computer model. And you determine, you grade the individual movements in the turn and the intersections called levels of service. I'm sure you've heard this before. It's how we grade intersections like we grade students. Um, this is a little bit different animal because you've got, this is an internal intersection. Uh, this is an internal intersection. Yeah, we can analyze this, but it's not really going to tell you anything to compare it. It's if it's today's conditions. It's probably failing. I mean, more more than more than a probability, it is failing. So but to what we do is quantify certain things and this is part of the data collection effort that we can take places. We could document how far these cars back out onto the road today and leave that as your baseline. And our goal is, and we're, again. We're not, you know, Nostradamus here. We can't predict that. Everything is going to work out and, you know, the way we hope it would work out. But this is the plan that we believe will solve. This here and that's all we have to go on at this point. Uh, but. Just knowing that how traffic flows and where the pinch points are, certainly you're going to still have the issues here. The same amount of volume is going to come in and out of that driveway. It's just how how did they get to that point? And do you solve any internal problems which we believe creates? You've got issues at this intersection that creates problems on the driveway, then which creates problems on Devon. If we could solve the problems in this area. Then my my opinion is, and our opinion is that this will solve some of this and therefore it'll be a snowball effect. So, but that's why we were saying, we will look at this now, do the data collection. We can take. We could document it. We could provide the information to the township, show that this backs out twenty cars out onto Devon this way and five in this way and. And then have that data available to your staff. And then once we, you know, do this, go through this, uh. These improvements and and, you know, certainly. We would put money in escrow to save for this traffic study, the post-construction study. And then do another study and make a comparison. And if it's still backing out, then we've got to come up with a better plan. A better mousetrap, if we want to call.
Is is there a way you can do a pilot phase for this?
I'm sorry?
Like a pilot, like a test versus so like I get both buses probably cannot go on the backside of that very well. However, you can put a chain and cones across. Where the drop off sidewalk is and you could maybe do a demo for like a week.
I I I don't think this is wide enough. They have to widen that for two cars.
Yeah, the back.
Well, if nobody parks there, it should be fine.
I think the back driveway would be tough. The back aisle would be tough.
I I know that. I know that.
Okay.
Both buses can't fit back.
If you were to do.
I was just trying to solve like what the board or what.
Yeah, I wish we had the other plan.
Like a pilot.
Wish we had the other plan available. Uh, we might have, we have it on the. Do we have a hard copy? Yeah, because what happens if you would do that and the buses would come around in here like this, but I don't know if there's an area where they could make the turns.
If the other, should you do a pilot like that? You you take time for for students and teachers and buses to get used to traffic patterns.
Correct. It would be like, it would have to be communicated very well.
Yeah, it would be very difficult for a number of students to come through and do that. And it's it's going to take time. When this first opens and people have been known for this. Process, it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit of a nightmare for the first week. Um, and uh, and we're just gonna figure it out afterwards and then say, okay, they get it. So one week trial at this would be, would be really tough to 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 uh. To incorporate in and get people used to traffic patterns and, okay, we're doing it for a week now. We're gonna, we're gonna stop and go back to normal. It's gonna just create more chaos. But I think that would be a difficult process. It's a good idea, but I think it would be a difficult process.
Gotcha.
I think basically what we need is a school district to let us know that if this doesn't solve the problem, they're not going to leave us in the dark. That they're going to come up with another solution and move forward and pay for the solution. I think ba- basically, that's where we need to.
Yeah.
We'll agree with that.
A part of your community would actually be us.
Yep.
Seven buildings in your community. So we're not going anywhere. You know where we are. So we'll definitely work. We we want to solve it too. Because we'll make the best shape and possibility to be with the better of people that come and go to the building, parents, teachers, students, everybody. And safety is the. The key thing. And I realize you have residents all around us there. They're probably complaining also. So we're trying to fix. Everything as best we can with this thing that by separating the buses and car traffic is a huge thing that's proven in all other sites. Really improve the site flow and get people in, get you out. But because the bus queues, when when that bus queues and opens that door, nobody moves. And so everything comes to a standstill. When you put them on their own pattern over there, all the other vehicle traffic that's coming in will keep going. While they're queued and unloading or loading the afternoon to mark. Because parents right now are tied in with the buses that are all stacked in a single lane around the building. Nobody moves. So it starts immediately backing out of Devon Drive. So that's why we're sure we can't prove that this will make it proven, but we will definitely, we're not going anywhere. We're. We like youth, we go a lot of times to youth and town trip and we'll be back going more work than youth and other buildings. So my my recommendation with that is is that I I think the the staff and our consulting team needs to work with the school district, come back with recommendations to you guys. But I I think that you guys can end up incorporating um, a condition to your recommendation, which hopefully will be a condition of the board supervisors. And pass some type of language that basis says, hey, this is approved, but a condition approval is they have to do a B C D. I'm uh, here to further evaluate things and address problems as they see fit. So we can, I think you're all your comments were really great for us to hear from a staff and a consultant point of view. And we can coordinate that with the school district and with the traffic engineer and um, for the township here and 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 uh, and incorporate that to our recommendation for you. Yeah, moving forward.
Right. Basically, yeah, we got to move forward tonight. Cause we're we're going, we're hashing over the same thing. It's going to be so have to be done with traffic studies and.
But hearing all these comments were really helpful for us. So we'll 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 definitely help facilitate that with with the uh, with the school district and 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 the township traffic engineer. So.
Okay.
Well, I I was just gonna throw a wrench in everything. Downtown area school district is looking at later start times for the high school. There's a committee that was put together that recommended to the board that there be later start times for the high school. So. I don't know if that's moving forward, but everything could be.
But they did start, they had a committee last year to look at that.
I was on the committee and the committee recommended to the board that it be later. So. Yeah, so.
They moved twenty minutes.
Yeah. So that's part of the recommendation. So it may change the time of all the traffic. So my only question was, when you're doing the traffic study, will you note neighborhood? Cars that are going straight through the intersection and those that are turning. So you can denote. These are neighborhood people who are just trying to move through the area versus who are coming to the school. So. If the time changes, you may very well see less impact on neighborhood drivers versus school drivers.
Right. One of the comments, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Uh, one of the comments that was made was to analyze. Document the traffic volumes at this intersection. Document the traffic volumes at this intersection.
Yes.
Okay. And the internal intersection.
So the Devon.
So this one, if we would do traffic counts here. What we would typically do is because it's a school and you got staff coming in potentially earlier or later. We would do counts usually around six thirty to nine thirty. That way you catch three hours of counts and the afternoon is a little bit different. School right now, I think the, I believe the bell time is two forty. Uh, we would try to do the counts, uh, around two o'clock and then go up to like six o'clock. And that way you catch afternoon activities and some, what that, I think this answers your question. I mean to blind you there. I was holding on to the laser there. But, um, what that does is when we do the count here, this will document all the vehicles at the intersection. So if anybody's going through the intersection.
Yeah.
We will catch those.
Okay.
And we, the goal is really to, you know, to get the volume in and out, but. The volume that's on Devon Road is, of Devon Drive is very important too. So we will do that and then we here, of course, we'll count. You know, the, the internal intersection and that way. We could document and what we could do is add these intersection counts too, is we can document pedestrians, number of buses are coming in. And which is very important. Again, if we're looking to do a potential crossing with a median, this is the area that we were talking about. That, that area is important because there's an existing crossing here now. And that potentially we would, uh, either keep that one or shift it over, but the safe, I don't know if it's. Wise to keep that one there. If you're going to put a safe haven there on the other side. Again, to answer your question, yes, uh, we will document all that and catch the through traffic as well, which would be, I guess, neighborhood traffic. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, you're up next.
I'll try and be short. I don't know the. I promise. So I'm Justin Brewer, the Alholland Associate Civil Engineer for the project. We've received Dan's review letter. Um, I know there's, there's a few comments in there. I'll work with Dan, uh, just to resolve some of the, uh, clarifies a few of his comments and questions. As. So the projects, the, our earth disturbance, I know the big concerns typically are traffic and stormwater. Two of the biggest concerns when a new project comes through. Um, so I just touch on stormwater quickly. Our, our improvements and earth disturbance that we've got to control stormwater for are, are kind of scattered throughout the site. Main disturbance areas over here with this building, there's some back in this corner and then obviously over here with the, uh, parking improvements. All of that drains down eventually to the basin there at the corner of Devon Drive and one thirteen. What we're proposing to do is we're designing a underground infiltration bed off of the first baseline outside of the playing field. To take stormwater runoff from primarily this side of the site. And over controlling on this side of the site to make up for what's getting down ultimately to what we call a point of interest down here at this existing basin. Like I said, we've got some comments from Dan. I'm going to meet with Dan, work out those concerns with Dan. Um, and, and incorporate any of those changes as part of our resubmission. That I think that's primarily, um, what I was going to touch on from Dan's letter. The only other thing we wanted to comment on was related to the landscaping comments from Mr. Tharkoff. He had made a comment about providing some screening and I believe Dale or Jay touched on this earlier. Um, along these parking lots and the bus loop. And as they mentioned previously, this, this area is used for band practice for the, the East High School, uh, band, marching band. And we, we, we looked at this as an entire site campus for impervious surface and everything like that. The section of the ordinance talks about screening and buffering between properties. There's technically a property line between the two runs right along that parking lot. So we're going to discuss with consultants and also we're seeking the planning commission's feedback of providing that screening. Off of that parking lot and the impact it, not only is it for the band practices on that field, but. Is it with any of these schools? They want to minimize any screening internally as from a security perspective. So that's, that was the one thing I wanted to touch on from landscaping. We can have a conversation with Mr. Tharkoff, but we just wanted to. Present that to you guys to see if you had any, any, uh, input on, on that. But other than that, between Tharkoff, Mr. Tharkoff's letter and, and Dan's letter, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work through those and comply with those.
So, yeah, I can kind, I kind of see what you're saying. That's just an open lock there now and to put a bunch of plantings there could. Could be an issue, but I'm not, I'm not a landscape architect either. So. Okay.
Baseball field. The, we're going to pipe, we're going to capture the roof drains from the building additions. And then inlets in the driveway and to a, an underground stormwater bed, uh, along the first baseline. It'll be underground, won't be visible from this.
Disrupts the, the baseball field while you're doing it, correct?
We, it's off of the first baseline, so it will be outside of the playing field. So a portion of it just, I mean, it stops, the edge of the bed is inside the first baseline and then we're going up. And maybe even going into that bank a little bit with our excavation. That's all I had. There weren't any other questions.
Any other questions? No. Yep.
Can I talk from here? Talk me to stand for.
Okay.
My name is Steven Swimer.
Can you at least stand up, sir? So, so I can hear you.
Said it's hard to stay. It's hard.
My name is Steven Swimer. I live at the corner of Rupert and Devon. I'm the guy that lives at the entrance to the high school. Okay. Uh, I've been there now thirty nine years. And I was at the hearings or whatever twenty years ago when they changed it over junior high to, to high school. The state, by the way, I'm true, I don't know where it is, they turned it down. They said there wasn't enough infrastructure or acreage for a high school there. And then they manipulated it. They bought in the O A fields and the Y and they were able to on paper have enough acres. So there's a bad taste from that in twenty years. And just the questions I have, and I'm delighted to hear some of the stuff that you're talking about, but you still, this is a massive high school. You have only one entrance. Was there any looking at another way to also, I mean, I, I. I know high schools all in this area. I can't think of one other high school that had just one entrance like that. With that, is that something you thought about?
I don't know if, if the district is not played at any other, uh, entrances.
No. Okay. My second question is, um, you were talking about islands on Devon. Did I hear that right? I, I just want to be true. I just, yeah, cause I've been lobbying. That's great. And there're going to be two islands on Devon?
The exact location.
Yeah, I'm just, again, I just wanted to make sure I heard you. That's all. Yeah. The crosswalks. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
This is an example from Unionville High School.
Yeah.
Um, which is what is there currently, which is.
Okay.
What we were talking about, um, possibly putting one in the area of the student lot crosswalk. And then at the end of the sidewalk on Devon.
Okay. Would there be another crosswalk now included on that end of that side? I sent you a video this week, didn't I Scott?
Yeah.
The kids running across, they come from the middle school, they walk down and then they cut across to the Y. There's no crosswalk there. They've dodged cars and trucks and buses. Um, and there's no, are you going to put a crosswalk there? And will it be a raised crosswalk?
The, the proposal that we discussed with the school district was to put a crosswalk here. The only raised area is the actual median. The street would not be great.
Would you consider, that's not going to do it. You need a raised, these people, I've been living there just, you know, just, they're speeding on the street. They just whizz on by, okay? They don't slow down and the island is a great idea, but why would you put a raised, soft, wide? Crosswalk like over by, uh, Walmart over here in East Whitman, uh, West Whitman. Uh, with pedestrian activated lights. You've got children from the middle school, all right? Crossing over this very heavily trafficked road, dodging cars. I got video of it, right Scott? There you go. Kids dodging cars. Someone's going to get killed. I've been saying that for years. But why not put wide, raised, soft, so the emergency vehicles will not be stopped. And pedestrian activated, because at the top of the hill there, okay, there's tremendous sun glare and. Okay. So, so.
No, I wasn't done yet. I was just.
It's, um, it's, I mean, it's ultimately, or this is the concept that's been won't that is a concept. But nothing's said and stolen yet. I think the giant lights haven't been done. I think your comments have been heard. It can be evaluated here between the school district and the township. Did you guys hear my comments and you wrote that? Okay. Cause that's, I think those are important. And you have at the top of the street there, um, at the entrance to the high school, the sun glare and you have kids, there's a freeway. Entrance there. So the kids are, they, they're looking left, looking right, looking straight. And often they'll get halfway across, they run back, uh, cars with sun glare while they're on their phone, drive right through. Uh, there's been a kid hit there. Thank God it was, uh, he wasn't serious to be here. But to me, it just seems like, and I've seen with the places, they have those raised crosswalks with pedestrian activated. You have an opportunity to do it here, do it. And would also, it would also stop some of the cut through that we've now experienced on Devon. If you put in your GPS, the fastest way to get to one place from the other on one thirteen, it says Devon Drive. So we have trucks, four thousand and eight hundred cars going down Devon Drive. It's a neighborhood. But they're, they're cutting through, we could grow the same thing. They cut down Devon and then they go down Whitford. And this will, in a nice way, just discourage that. I know people like speed bumps, so we won't call it a speed bump, call it a raised wide crosswalk. It would be safe for children and adults. I see people off Saturday, O A, parents trying to dodge cars getting across that, that walkway. So that would be another thing I would really like you to give serious thoughts and say to Devon, we need that. We need that. Um, but again, you know, I look at this and. You're forcing it again. You've got this place, this school with not enough room. And it's, it's caused a problem for twenty years. You know, um, I don't know what the answer is other than building another high school where they should have from their way. Okay. Make that a middle school or something. I don't know. But you're forcing it again. You're forcing situations that are going to end up not being, not solving.
Well, well, we're, we're hoping, we're listing to people and we're hoping you could sit down, come up with the best, best solution we can to make things better.
Yeah.
I mean, that, and we all know that it's a bad situation.
Yeah.
And hopefully that we take everybody's advice and, and we come up with the engineers.
The attitude you're taking about this and really looking to make it safe. This is not pedestrians. Kids used to walk to school. They don't do that anymore. The kids are off, I said it before, if you retire, hearing it, but pre circle. They live about sixty feet from the school, they're bust.
Right.
They built a, a middle school on a highway across from a wall wide McDonald's. Who thought that was a good idea? You know, Wednesday afternoon.
All right. I understand. Just remember, kids are kids and people are people. So all we can do is the best we can do. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Same thing. We're going to make it better than what it was.
Does that like fifteen miles an hour flashing lights, like all that kind of stuff? Okay.
The idea.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have any more comments from the audience? Anything online?
Somebody raised their hand online.
You say you don't want to.
We have a question? No? All right.
Thank you.
At this, all right. You're welcome. All righty. Uh, at this point, uh. We might want to make a recommendation for the school district? No? Okay.
No.
Thank you for your time and we will work, move forward. All right.
Nope.
Okay. Everybody covered for this one? One down. Okay. Next is Chick-fil-A, two eleven Eagleville Borough Board zoning plan for discussion.
My name's Tyler Prime with the firm of Prima Tubal. Uh, I represent Chick-fil-A. We're back again. We were before you previously in February. We just had a sketch plan and wanted to talk a little bit about that. Um, and we're back tonight. We've submitted, uh, subsequent to that meeting, we submitted a traffic study. That was one of the. Uh, items we discussed last time. If you recall with the improvements, we're essentially just redoing an existing store. Uh, the existing and operating Chick-fil-A's was approved about twenty years ago. Obviously Chick-fil-A's have kind of taken off since then. They're more successful, a little busier than they were before. So the hope here is just to redo, uh, we're adding a small building addition, reworking the interior of the store. We're actually losing some seats. Uh, to create a kind of a bigger, more streamlined kitchen inside. There's associated site improvements, uh, adding the dual drive-through, uh, lane fulfillment. Some associated site upgrades, uh, et cetera, but nothing really beyond that. But the main point of us coming back is, uh, to talk about the traffic study, traffic data. We have, uh, we're scheduled before the zoning hearing board in two weeks. I think on Wednesday, the nineteenth. We're there, so we thought it'd be wise to get back in front of you before that. Uh, we will be back after the zoning board, assuming that goes favorably with a full land development submission, uh, back before this board. Thank you.
Okay.
Before. Before you, sorry.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead. All right. Yeah.
Do you mind before you start? So you were in front of us, I remember a while ago, you were going to the zoning hearing board. What did they say?
We haven't gone yet.
Oh, you haven't?
We have not. No.
Oh, okay. So you just met with us.
We were waiting on, uh, there were some landlord items. We needed some consent signed. We had a kind of a multi-month delay.
Okay.
Um, and then when we kind of resubmitted, got scheduled for zoning, we were scheduled back before this board. So I spoke with Mark Breed yesterday and he recommended that we come anyway, present the updated traffic data. And get that in front of you guys, because it will be back, uh, for land development eventually, assuming the zoning hearing board goes well.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just going to start with our engineer, uh, Chris Riegel, kind of give you an overview of the plan. I know it's been a long time. Since we've talked about it, so you can see the improvements, what we're proposing and kind of how the site operates now. And then we'll move on to traffic from there. Take any questions as they come.
Good evening. Chris Riegel from Colliers Engineering and Design. Yeah, I, I was the one that presented this plan back in February. We, we discussed, um, the new operation of the site. So. Just to refresh everybody's memory, um, what we're doing is. I guess first building wise, so we're going to construct a four hundred square foot building addition back here, which is basically for a revamped kitchen. So they're going to gut the kitchen. Um, they, they basically, you know, state of the art, new kitchen. Um, and then internally they also, um, lose some seats because this kind, the kitchen kind of pushes out down into here into the main area. And then the, um, you know, the, the ordering counter and stuff like that at the, at the front. Gets pushed out, so they lose some seats in this area. Part of the, I'll say circulation wise, and then the parking lots, we created a, a one-way circulation around the site. So cars will now, they can get in at the same entrances. These all stay the same on Dallin Forge and then on Eagleview. But they come in here, they go in a one-way pattern up into the drive-through stacking area. Where we're provo- proposing a canopy right here, which is a dual overhead canopy. That's the, that's called the face-to-face canopy, where you'll have two menu boards. You'll have your. Like it is today, if you're there, where they have the, um, the team members outside taking your order. So that all takes place underneath this canopy here. Um, under, underneath, directly under the canopy, there's some fans, there's heaters, stuff like that for. For the workers that are underneath there in all sorts of weather like we have today. Um, you merge from this, this two lane like it is today into one lane. You'll come around the back here. And then we're proposing another canopy. This is the meal pickup canopy. Where you will pick up your food and then come out and then exit up, uh, you know, you can come out. Onto Eagleview or you can come out this way and make your way on to wherever you need to go. You know, we're, and then this is also one way here. We've, we've kind of angled some parking here. We're loo- the reason we're coming in front of the zoning hearing board, we're losing fourteen parking spaces, so we need a parking variance. Um, right now, we are. Right now, we are, I don't know the exact number that we're at right now, but like I stated, we're, we're losing 14 parking spaces. That's, that's the, the proposed plan. There's also just one other little intricacy here. There's also kind of a slip or bypass or exit here. If you, you know, you kind of come in here, you see that the, the drive-through is too busy. You can actually hop in here and then exit as well. There's no curbing, just some striping in, in this area. I know a lot of different municipalities where I work on these Chick-fil-A's, it's nice to have a, a bypass or an escape route, you know, on a, on a drive-through. So that's the proposed improvements that we're looking at. Same, same as last time when I was here in February.
Is this a through road here? Is that that through?
Yeah, that's, yes, that is correct. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's all remaining, remaining the same.
So this is the new plan here?
This is actually the, I want to say it's, it's, we've, this is the current plan. This is, we've, I don't know if we showed the Freddy's, this is Freddy's up here. We've added some additional data to the zoning plan where we have all the Freddy's parking counts, parking demand, stuff like that in this area.
Okay, so you, oh, I'm sorry, Richard. I was just saying, this is the proposal.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. But now you're limit, you're taking away seating. So do you still need to take, eliminating those parking spots?
Is there any? Yeah, so, you know, over time, just a COVID and then how things change, Chick-fil-A's seen just an uptick in, in drive-throughs in general. So I think previously, and it's, it stayed in the traffic report, I think they were somewhere around 50%. Now they're like 60, 70% drive-through traffic. So not as many people are going out anymore and sitting in restaurants and eating. Why that is, I'm not sure, but don't know. So they technically don't need, and Corey, our traffic engineer from Dynamic Hill, he can testify to that. But, you know, with the loss in seats, we technically don't need as many parking stalls as well.
Do you have park, parking in reserve?
Yeah.
Parking reserve?
We, I mean, I believe when Chick-fil-, actually, I think it was when Freddy's or maybe when Chick-fil-A came in previously for some modifications. I don't know if it was with, in conjunction with the landlord, there was some, I'll say, reserved parking that was, it wasn't proposed, but if it was ever needed, it could potentially be constructed.
Okay.
The past approvals dictated that if there was, as determined by the township zoning officer or additional parking, that they can, the township can dictate to the owners, both the Chick-fil-A and Freddy's, that they need to put in those 34 spaces in reserve.
Okay.
Where they are proposed to be located, the majority of them are located on that east side of that access through lane returns marking that it is a retaining wall and an area, that was an area that was that the original approvals for this land development show those spaces in reserve to be installed as determined needed by then, by the township.
Okay. Isn't there a stream there?
It is, it is a wet area in there. There is a, I, I, I got to look back at the plan, it was actually, that's not a wet land area, but it is a drainage, drainage feature within that area. And it was, it would be difficult to build here from that process.
It would be difficult to build.
Yeah. They were actually shown as like parallel parking spaces. And then the spaces that were on the Freddy's lot, remainder of those actually near east parking spaces.
Yes.
So when Chick-fil-A is really busy, that's going to be a really difficult parallel parking effort, if that's really a spot, because that back road then gets busy with traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel that our data and our backup will kind of show that we don't really need those parking stalls. Just, you know, with the data in the parking that's out there. And, and I live right around the corner from this location. I've noticed a lot, just with the revised circulation that they have out there right now, I don't see as much car, as much traffic backing out onto Eagle View as I used to. So.
Right. So they have to get this approved by zoning for this parking spaces?
They are currently in right now for a recommendation from the planning commission for their zoning hearing application. If they are successful with the zoning hearing board, then they will come back to you guys for land development application.
Okay.
So not only today, it's basically you guys are looking at saying, do you have recommendations or thoughts on their requested relief or reduced number of parking spaces? That's, that's, that's what they're here for tonight, from that aspect, looking for positive or, or positive recommendation, of course. For, for you guys to say that you support the modifications that are being done here, reduction in parking or to accommodate, accommodations.
So their ordinance says one space for every 50 square feet, correct?
Plus one per employee.
Oh, plus one per employee, okay. How long ago was that ordinance written and has it, like, things changed?
Yeah, I don't, if, I don't know if you can zoom in on that box right there, or it's, it's actually in that letter. I don't, I don't have it right in front of me. But I think that we're required like 116 stalls or something like that, which is overkill technically for a fast food restaurant.
So when the property was developed, when the original Chick-fil-A came in, there was a shared parking agreement between Chick-fil-A and the Freddy's parcel now. So the reduction in parking is for the overall parking, even though those spaces are specifically on Chick-fil-A stuff. So I would say any recommendation that you made tonight would still include the ability to put in the parking spaces in reserve, you know, if the township needs it. Because that was part of the original condition.
And you recall that the Freddy's site has changed. It was farm, it was a.
Well, I, I think the thing is that if they can get the approval from the zoning board, the plan looks fine. I mean, if they, if they think this, this will work for them.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I, I don't have any problem with this plan, but I, I really question whether the zoning is going to, zoning board's going to approve something as drastic as this, because it's saying you need 192 spaces here. Then. Between the two, oh, all right.
That's, that's a combination of, of the, of the, of the employee parking for, for both restaurants plus the, the, the number per square foot and the, I don't have the, you know, that figure list, 22 employees, I think are, are what's showing for the Chick-fil-A. So during a, a normal operation day here, they having, they're having 22 employees, basically coming through and parking in, in the lot. So they're, they're basically, I mean, the number of spaces, do you recall how many spaces you have typically shown on the?
We have, we have currently, there are currently, there are 56 parking stalls. We're required to have 116.
So, so you're actually, but look at that, you're on your Chick-fil-A site, you are proposing 42 spaces.
That is correct.
Number of employees are 22. So that means for the, for the people going to Chick-fil-A, I mean, obviously you can park in, have a shared parking with Chick-fil-A, with, with Freddy's, but you're basically providing 22, you're providing, I mean, you're, you're 22, you're 20, 20 spaces for, for, for.
Customers.
Is, is there any place in the general area where there could be a employee parking lot developed so that the employees are actually parked off-site, so that guests could park at the restaurant?
They would need a special exception to have a shared parking lot.
So, so the shared parking agreement is between Freddy's and Chick-fil-A.
Right.
The office, not quite started next door, Richard Robinson's been there for five years, we have some food. But people were employees, there were times when they were parking in that lot or they would, they would come and just, just park in that lot. They're not supposed to. I wasn't part of the shared parking agreement, but that was happened and I know there was complaints or concern about that from just people.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty full for that, that office, those spaces are filled, you know, it's, it's a busy spot. Well.
Yeah, I'll, just one thing on the parking, then I'll throw it over to our traffic engineer for, for any of that. But employee parking, you know, a lot of the employees there are kid, you know, teenagers, stuff like that. So maybe they don't have their driver's licenses. So a lot of times their parents drop them off. I don't know the exact number. I'm not saying it's half of them, but it's, it's a good, maybe a quarter of them that don't even park or need a parking space.
Good point.
It is a good point, because whenever I go there, there'll be, lucky to be five cars parked there.
Yeah, I, I think he's right. I mean, but if they can convince the zoning, zoning board.
Yeah. Do you guys have any more engine, civil engineering questions I can answer?
No.
And I'll have our traffic engineer.
Good evening. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic. Just jump right into parking, since that seems to be where the discussion's been focused. As Chris mentioned, you know, we do have 56 spaces currently onsite, we're reducing it to 42 as part of the redevelopment of the property to, to really aimed at reconfiguring the drive-through operations and the circulation to form more of a traditional fast food restaurant, drive-through circulation pattern. Right now, when you come in off Eagle View, you can actually come in here and there's a merge point with the drive-through from the customers coming in from the south, customers coming in from the north, they actually merge right here to enter drive-through. So the, the overall goal was really to clean that up, clean the circulation up, reduce the points of conflict and have everyone focus their, the entering drive-through volume at that southern access point. So really limits the potential of the drive-through queuing ever backing up beyond the actual Chick-fil-A parcel itself. So Chris also mentioned, we're reducing the number of seats in the dining room. We're actually reducing them significantly. There's 140 seats currently, we're reducing it to 72. So almost a 50% reduction in the number of seats there. And even with the reduction in parking stalls from 56 to 42, we're actually increasing the parking rate per seat. And I know it was brought up earlier, it is based on building square footage. Something we traditionally see in fast food restaurants is a lot of times it's based on the number of seats and not actually the building square footage, since it's a large portion is typically dedicated to kitchen and the prep. And that's really what you're seeing here. You know, many years ago, a lot of people would dine in at these facilities, so you had a much more higher utilization of the parking and the dining room. You're not seeing that as much anymore. It's more focused on drive-through activities. So the efficiency of the kitchen is really key, and that's really what's driving the, the modification and expansion of the kitchen. So even though we're reducing the number of parking spaces onsite, we're actually increasing the parking ratio per seat. So, but, and you know, you correctly noted too earlier that the, the amount of parked vehicles we typically see onsite, we did 11 hours of parking counts out there through lunchtime, through evening and through Saturday periods. The max we ever saw was 23 vehicles. So anything was 23 or less. So obviously providing 42 spaces onsite, it's more than a 50% factor of safety beyond the maximum that we saw out there.
Is your, is your, the new design and the, the parking also kind of optimized for the increase in DoorDash and Uber Eats? And, and like very periodic parking in and out. So they're not necessarily going through the drive-through, they're not necessarily parking to go inside to eat, but they're parking to go inside to retrieve. So what's the plan? Is that being accounted for?
It is, and that's a great question. So really, you know, we typically see these front spaces, which are adjacent to Eagle View. You know, those are going to be utilized for those quick trips and those quick turnover trips from either DoorDash, Uber Eats, or even customers that, you know, do the call ahead and just want to do the, the curbside pickup. So those will be used for those, those quick trips. You know, these spaces obviously be used by employees and potentially by dining customers as well. But really, you know, the focus was again on reorienting this drive-through, providing a more efficient layout of the drive-through to limit any potential and obviously by the reconfiguration of the site and by not allowing customers to come in off Eagle View and directly enter the site and potentially a drive-through queue, we're eliminating that potential of that queue ever backing up and having any impact on Eagle View.
So where you were just circling, that's an exit only?
It's exit only. Whereas today, you can enter here and there's actually a drive-through exit just to the east of that. So there's a lot of movements going on in that one area. We felt by making it exit only, you know, you're really going to clean up, reduce those points of conflict and just help the overall flow of the site.
So we have two entrances then?
There's only one.
Yeah, there's, this is, this is the only entrance to the site. So we're creating a one-way circulation pattern throughout the site. So again, even you can come in off Eagle View, but you'll be required to circulate to the east, turn right, then to the south and enter to the facility here. So any patron that's wishing to park and dine in, any Uber Eats, DoorDash, or enter to the drive-through will all do so on the southern access point.
There's no concern about that, what's that road coming out for 113?
That road members almost like a one-way, because it comes off.
Yeah, exactly.
So it'd be more of the intersection.
That's down. Um, so, so, so two questions, sorry, going back to the, are you delineating those 11 spaces along Eagle View Boulevard? Will they be delineated as a pickup here for, for curbside pickup?
We weren't intending on formally delineating them, just by typical function, you know, that's typically how they're utilized. You know, we'd certainly be amenable to working with the township, but they wanted a certain number of them designated or signed as curbside pickup.
I mean, that, that just eliminates, I, I guess the, the, the concern that I have, that eliminates the number of parking spaces for the seats internally here. If you have five of them marked as curbside pickup, you can't then park in those five spots for coming and going. So that's, that was a concern and I'm not sure, I'm not necessarily formulating an opinion if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but that's something to be considered. With regards to, I had commented in my letter also about the one-way exit heading north towards Freddy's, that area there. So before that was a, basically a one-way in is what you had, is what currently exists there today. You have cars coming off Eagle View Boulevard into that, into that pork chop, into the island in, in that area, and then you have cars coming out. I don't know what your thoughts were on conflicting traffic movements in there, that you have now cars coming out and somebody's coming in for that right, right turn in.
Sure, that's a good question. So right now, you know, we do have egress for the drive-through, which is just to the east of this driveway today. So those movements do currently exist. It's slightly further to the east. There is adequate site distance there for vehicles stopped, waiting to see any patrons entering. But, but again, by, in my professional opinion, by making this egress only, you're eliminating all the conflicts with the ingress movements, because right now, vehicles entering the drive-through, not only do they have to wait for any vehicles that are utilizing this internal circulation aisle, but all the vehicles coming in from the south wanting to turn left into end of the facility, they also have to wait for those vehicles as well. So we're, we're reorienting the traffic patterns onsite and by doing that, making it more efficient.
I could see where that'd be an issue, if someone's trying to make a left and shooting across. And then someone's trying to make a left to make a, to make a right out of there, that could be an issue.
Yeah, it, it, it's definitely, I mean, coming in and out of there for extended period of time when we worked, that, that was always just, I mean, it just, it was a, it was a mess. Like it's really busy in that area during the peak times and coming, going out of there. I would avoid that intersection at all costs, even if I was coming out to go Eagle View Boulevard, when I was leaving my office, because of, because of the turning movements there. And I, I just, I don't know from, 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 from a point of view here, if that's the best solution. The biggest concern is that Eagle View Boulevard, the right turn in, people are traveling at a decent speed on Eagle View Boulevard. They turn to make a right turn in, and then you have somebody pulling out and it just, just causing that, that, that conflicting movement. When you have that further away, where the drive-through lane comes out, it gives a little more space for a vehicle turning in off Eagle Boulevard to have a little more space in there, so.
It did, it did, but what you're doing is when, when we did the traffic counts out here, there were between 50 and 60 people making this left turn into the site that were coming from the south. So you're pulling that entire volume out of the, this intersection and those vehicles will now just be turning in directly left to that southern access point. So really, you're going to reduce the volume of traffic at this intersection by this reconfiguration. Certainly, you know, we're, we're pushing that driveway slightly closer than it is today. But I think that the overall reduction in the turning movements here is still going to be a benefit to, when compared to the existing condition.
So if, if, if a vehicle comes down the access aisle on the, on the, on the right side of the plan there, I guess that, if they're coming in off a Dallin Forge Road at the bottom of the screen, and they basically come in and they miss this turn to go in, and they circle around, that they, they don't, they don't have the ability to get back into Chick-fil-A. They've turned around and not familiar with the traffic patterns. I guess they can pull into 10 spots or pull into Freddy's is what they're, I guess, doing here.
They could, but we're certainly going to propose directional signage at the southern access point indicating that this is the entrance, indicating that the drive-through is this way, you know, typical things that you see at the Chick-fil-A to really reinforce the circulation pattern.
Okay, so that's all will be dictated during the land development stage?
That's correct.
I guess I'm trying to, to, to see, the people coming off the Eagle View Boulevard, they're still going to be able to turn right, right there, right?
Correct.
So they're going to think they can come right in and keep doing a U-turn. So what's, what's, just signage is all you're going to have to stop them, right?
Yeah, we'll provide do not enter signs on both sides of the driveway, so it's clear. And we can even provide additional one-way signage or supplemental signage like that to indicate that it's exit only.
Big arrows on the street.
We can do that as well. Yeah, we, there'll obviously be a stop bar, a stop line across the entire driveway. We can, you know, we've seen sometimes repaint do not enter on the opposite side, so it's visible to vehicles entering the site.
Also, we talked about a nice crosswalk at the entrance that cuts through where the double line of, uh, you know, right in there, a good crosswalk designated for pedestrians to come in.
Right here, sir. We we do provide a crosswalk up here up by the ADA stalls. Is the township looking for something supplemental further south?
To cross through because you have all those parking spots. So that's where I currently park to go inside to get my Chick-fil-A and you have to cross through the drive through line and there's not really a good delineated area where to where to actually walk.
Because that's one of that's a main entrance doors. If you're in that lower lot on the south side over here and you want to go in, you're you're not walking up and going in that crosswalk. You're 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 going in that front door. That's your main.
Right where your arrow is. We had talked about originally about making sure there was a good crosswalk there, I thought. I mean, knowing that you got traffic going through, but at least a designated.
Yeah, and that's a great point. You know, we can certainly provide additional striping within that drive through queuing area to provide a dedicated pedestrian crossing and you know, monitor the queue such that cars don't stop on it.
Good.
Just one more question. Since you and I were going back and forth a little bit about the square footage, what do you see in the industry with parking spots per employee or per per seat?
Per seat, we typically one to three, one to four is the typical ratio you see per seat.
Nick, for our parking or we have different parking for fast food restaurants than we do for dining restaurants. Dining restaurants is one space per two seats.
Okay.
Can we get more trash cans? Or like trash cans on Chick-fil-A property that extend, you know, the drive through trash cans.
With the extension so that if you're.
Yeah, like if you're increasing, you know, capacity for drive through, increase trash collection for drive through because there's trash on the corner. There's a ton of trash coming out of Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, we can certainly add additional trash cans.
Yeah, I've cleaned it like volunteered and cleaned up Chick-fil-A trash on my weekends. So that would be great.
You will certainly make that a priority and we appreciate your efforts to help and keep them aside beautiful.
Okay. Any other questions? Public online too? Okay. Thank you. How's the board feel about that? Do we want to make a recommendation? I mean, it's it's a it's an area that really needs to be. I mean, there's review letters and stuff.
I mean, your recommendations, they recommend that they proceed, you know, with this plan to zone here.
That makes sense.
You you can support, you can support the variance. You can basically say you don't support the variance, that you don't think this is a good idea for reduction in parking spaces. Or you can basically not take an opinion on it here, but basically recommendation that proceed forward and and you know, no, uh, no, no opinions. If you have any conditions or recommendations that you want to consider such as they should consider the reserved parking installation here for or or further analysis for I mean, I didn't know about the reduction in seats. It wasn't dictated on the plan here. Here for for this, but I I think there's some obviously during the land development stage or they need to, I think they're going to need to make sure to present that data to the zoning hearing board that they're reducing the seats from one forty to seventy two.
Right.
And something wasn't clear on the application at all here for this. But so you can, you can support their support their variance. You can not support it or you can have no opinion on that. It would be the option here too.
Well, my opinion as chairman, I think that we need to support it to a point that we need to help the drive through window. The parking spaces have to be another issue, I think. I think we need to move forward with the 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 addition and the addition so they can get more people moving through quicker. With that, does anybody want to make a recommendation?
I think the only question I had, which is probably irrelevant because it sounds like there's probably not actually going to be a parking problem in my opinion. But the reserved parking that would have to be, you said it would be difficult because of the stream and the wetland, the wet, the wet area. That seems like an area that would be, it'd be great to have a little more information about that because what does that mean exactly? If it's difficult, does that mean that?
They they have to go through a permitting process. They'd have to evaluate that. But I mean, they they ultimately hear you're allowed to disturb wetlands and 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 that areas, you might have to do mitigation for those wetlands.
Right.
But the 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 owner of this, the Chick-fil-A leases this land from 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 J. Lo. And they basically were the one who developed this parcel to begin with. And they presented during this land development process and when they when they first proposed Chick-fil-A that if they basically need additional parking, they they will install it. So would they, could they potentially get denied from D E P that they can't do it? Um, yes, but but ultimately if the township feels that it's necessary to put those parking spaces in, um, we can tell them to go, go, go get your permits for it. If D P denies them, then we can then then we could deal with it. But uh, but ultimately here, yeah, I mean, it's not it's not our guys, our decision staff or your guys as a planning commission here to to make that call. If we feel that additional parking is needed, we tell them to go get additional parking. If they can't find that there, then they can look to evaluate other options for for that. But they presented to us that this is what they could do if they needed it.
Yeah, okay.
Dennis, I'll make a recommendation to state that the commission would like to uh, like to see this plan proceed forward, but um, we should see what the zoning hearing board has to say and if they approve this waiver or not.
Okay. Um, with do we want to put in the stipulations like from the well, no, we can just go with what.
I think I I'd like to hear what the zoning hearing board would have to say.
So it's like we have no opinion on it.
Well, no, we want to see it proceed forward.
Except until we get the. All right.
I just don't want them to get bounced back and forth between us and.
They should go through the zoning.
Correct, but we we support the project.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to get their opinion just to make sure that they don't have any concerns.
Want to state it one more time?
Yeah, so just wanted to. So they should. Go ahead.
Our recommendation from the commission would be to proceed to see this plan move forward. But see what the zoning hearing board has to say. If they have any additional opinions on the way that this plan is currently written. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, yep. Second.
The issue for the zoning board is about parking quantity, right? Does anyone have any concern that contingent on reducing the seat count that they're not going to have enough parking spots there? Because if we all think that it's fine, let me make that suggestion. If we disagree about it, well, then I suggest next proposal.
I mean, my view on it is if they run out of parking spaces, they're going to run out of customers because there's no place to park.
Yeah.
I've it's it's if you've been to a Starbucks, it's just like the the Chick-fil-A now. Everybody just waits in the drive through lines. I bypass them all the time and order online. I run in and grab it. So like they said, they only saw twenty three cars there and there's how many spots available now? I don't. I personally don't see the spots all filling up and that being an issue.
So no concern, no concern on the reduction of seating. That's what that's what we're saying.
Right.
Yeah, the reason. Okay, the reason not that I'm not concerned is because just somebody said is somebody drives by and there's too long of a line in the drive through and there's not enough parking spots, Chick-fil-A will not have that customer. So if I I don't see, there's there's no backup onto Eagleview. It doesn't really affect me.
People like to circle around in a parking lot waiting for a spot.
Exactly. It's just going to be, you know, the market's going to take care of that.
Well, we have a a recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck with the zoning board. Sorry, Nick, that was just a little.
No, I know, I know. I was trying to word it like.
All right. Next, Lionville Shopping Center, Chipotle. Concept plan?
Yes, good evening. My name is Bob Tucker from the firm Capeland Stewart here on behalf of the Lionville Shopping Center. This evening, we're looking for your feedback and some comments on two sketch plans showing a proposed Chipotle restaurant at the Lionville Shopping Center location. Let's show up up here on it's one of our exhibits. With me this evening is Matt Shero from Dynamic Engineering and Eric Kelly from Paramount Realty. As I said, the 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 two plans show a proposed Chipotle at this location, that the restaurant is permitted in in this district and at this location. However, the shopping center was originally approved by conditional use decision back in nineteen eighty seven. Uh, one of the conditions in that decision was that no fast food restaurant be permitted on the lot. Therefore, we need a determination from the township that Chipotle is not a fast food restaurant in order to proceed with with the application. That that decision is going to be made by township staff, Tara, your solicitor. But but certainly we'd ask for for your feedback and and support in in concluding that it's not a fast food restaurant. It's fast food restaurants not defined in your ordinance. So it's going to be I think common sense to to use it. Some of the distinguishing factors between Chipotle and and a fast and and other fast food restaurants like McDonald's or Burger King. Real ingredients, higher price point. No kid oriented toys. There's no order board. It's not twenty four seven. Um, and just if you've ever been there, it's not fast food. You you know, you have to go through the process of selecting a lot of items. It it's different, I believe, than than your typical uh, fast food Wendy's, McDonald's, Burger King. That would you know, open it up to any questions on on that issue. Or or other thoughts.
My first question, and and this is right off not that shopping center has been there since eighty seven. Was any of this on the original pop plan? Or did, I mean, I don't take this wrongly. Did you guys just drive up and say, oh, we want to put a restaurant in this parking lot?
Well, I it so the restaurant is is it is permitted as part of a shopping center use.
And and I'm not saying it's not permitted.
Right.
I'm just saying, was this on the original plan? Or what even gave you the idea? There's a parking lot there that we should put a restaurant here or a fast food or whatever you want to call it.
Well, there's a need and and a desire to to install it and and the the I yeah, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Eric. We are the actual owners of the shop. There is a very good question. So in today's business model, we're trying to be still very difficult since we're moving, trying to make things comfortable. What we're finding is we have a lot of partners in the industry for our tenants, which only being one of them, a lot of repeat deals. And they'll move through all of our properties in a fall since fifteen weeks this year. Chipotle is represented locally by C E R E, who is very familiar with market. And they had to totally do a whole bunch of deals at one of their centers. This might be a good center for you because they have area out here. And if they can lay it out and make it work, they can get to the square of the township. We think this would be a strong location for us. So that's how it came up. We looked at it as well. Quite frankly, there's a lot of items that we have to look at. There's other roles just besides whether this is fast food or not fast food that we have to work through, but we're willing to go to the township for you guys because you're our partners. And this, we want to do deals with them. We respect their opinions. And we're doing the ask. So we looked at the market. We said, you know what? It really doesn't stand out. You just got to do knowledge, you have company uses that are similar, but not seen. So we heard the first step and we called the Terrance staff. And they give us a list of users. Next step is we got to make sure we felt this even further to see is this going to fit in. So we didn't just add it to the loop. Chipotle contacted us and said, we'd like to be here.
Right. And and if I just piggyback on that, so you have a review letter from E B Walsh. They identified several issues with zoning and 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 possible compliance with that. So so really, we we just want you to point us in a direction with the with the sketch plans to proceed because of the the this project will probably likely need relief from the zoning hearing board, conditional use, land development. So you know, before we we proceed, it's.
Just one more step back. Can we see the sketch plans?
Sure.
Are these, so these are going to be, this would be a standalone.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Matt to come up and and walk you through the the two sketch plans.
So 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 actually, let me, let me, let me go back and answer Dennis's one question here. So this was not a pad site. So no, so there's some developments that you see that there was something planned and 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 ultimately here for a future bank pad or future restaurant, this was never contemplated with the original development plan back in eighty seven. Um, so this is basically taking a parking lot and converting it over to it. And as as the applicant has noted, it was Chipotle who basically came to them and said to them, hey, we'd like to turn around and 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 potentially put in this location, not not number, number one. So that was that that wasn't ever originally thought about through through this process, through this process here. And and I guess also just to piggyback on maybe the introduction to this aspect here is they have some sketch plans in front of you. All they're looking for right now is feedback from you guys, whether or not you'd like to see if this is a a use and and a for you them to continue to proceed forward. There's a lot of processes that go forward, conditional use, zoning hearing board, land development. Then need to happen. All they're looking for right now is some feedback to go back to 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 their their user to say, hey, this is something that we think is worth pursuing or not. Um, so that's the process here that is is really looked at here. There's lots of zoning and variance issues that need to be talked about here. Um, and they can obviously go through that process, but I just want to tee that up here, let you guys know what, where they're at in the stage of this stage of the stage of this game right now. It's a sketch plan only. Or two sketch plans is actually two options. So maybe it's worthwhile running through the the before we get into that is to run through the two two options of what you're doing, I think, might be helpful as an overall, and then you can jump into some of the issues will be my recommendation.
So what's the second? So we would, this is the first, this is A.
Right now, that's like a small parking lot that's like offshoots for yous.
Yes, if you go back.
Looks like a fast food restaurant to me. Sorry, not to not to sound rude. I really, I'm sorry. It's the first thing I see is just the drive through.
Right, it's a fast food restaurant.
Well, and talking about parking that we're giving Chick-fil-A our time about, I mean, how many spots were there on that first site?
Twenty three.
Twenty three?
Twenty six, twenty six.
So concept A is proposed in this location.
Yeah, let's just start with the base. Yep.
When you see the concept A plan, that is the location where you're looking at. Concept B plan.
Well, it's just in the middle of a parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to take up some of the parking.
But as you can see in that photo, that part of the parking lot doesn't really get used.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that there's room for a fast food restaurant to be placed.
And 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 sorry, real quick, please. I I know drive through, it's not really a drive through, we'll drive through, it's it's an order station.
It's a, it's more of a pickup window.
Sorry.
So you're not ordering, you're not ordering as you drive through. You literally are coming in with your mobile order. You're, there's a little screen, you right, you scan it, then you go around and it's already made for you. So you're not, you're not paying for anything. You're not ordering anything in the, it's more of a pickup lane. So similar to Chick-fil-A having pickup spaces out front, this is just happens to be more of a pickup lane than a drive through. They actually came up with a funny name for it too. Chipotle, Chipotle.
What they distinguish because they're doing this so often right now because they do not want to get lumped in as the fast food. They don't want to be considered a burger place. They don't want to consider the milk chicken fries. They want to keep promoting their fresh ingredients. So they point to three things that they believe define fast food. Okay, the ability to pick up your food from a window, the ability to select your food from the queue and the ability to order a paper that one. In their model, you cannot, there's no menu order. So you can't get in line with what you want. You must order ahead. You either do that by using your app or by calling ahead. And then they'll have it ready for you. It's still make order. They don't have the ingredients sitting there. They have to put everything prepped. And you cannot pay for it at the window. Everything has to be paid in advance and going to pick it up. Much like you see the Starbucks order ahead and you walk in and sitting on the rack. So they're really pushing us to continue to use the word that Chipotle opposed to driving because they do not want to lose the idea that they were really a casual dining experience. And a lot of our users are going for this now where there's a pickup and it's because of COVID. And they saw the business model and it didn't be available to them, but they do not want to change to be a fast food period.
If you go through that lane, if you drive up and go in that lane, you cannot, you could, I mean, you pull up and say, oh, I'm looking for a burrito. That that you can't, you can't order it.
No, you cannot. You have to park, get out of your car and then go in. Or you have to go to another space and use your app. Likewise, if you use the already ordered, you will not get the notification to pick up food because you haven't paid for it. You cannot pay for it. Go to park, get out of your car and once I've paid for it.
Now, does that fix the issue over in the West Whiteland town? Now, does that fix the issue over in the West Whiteland Township one? Because I've used it personally, that pickup app, and I've waited forty minutes at the store for it. So and I I don't mean to compare this to West Whiteland Township, but.
But Nick, I I think we should compare it. That restaurant is a mess.
It is a mess.
Westchester to avoid that restaurant.
I have traveled over forty minutes to find a legitimate Chipotle because of the issue. Like, if you're having a specific line for this, I mean. Forty minutes times six cars, I mean, three hours, I mean, look. I understand there's a, there's a bad apple in every bunch.
Scenario without coming to talk to you guys first, because really it works around one key key topic. Wouldn't we be allowed to pursue this further? And that's, once we make that determination, we can work through a lot of that, we can reach Chipotle in here. But before we go through all of that, we have to really look at the different site.
I mean, I think there's the, would we be allowed, and then there's, do we want it? Right, because for for I'm going to come from a place of like, first of all, why did Chipotle identify this location when there's a location two miles? It's a mess down the road, so I want to know why they determined that this was a location that they can be successful in. You don't want to talk about fast food, but yet last year. Or two thousand twenty, they had a twenty five million dollar fine because of foodborne illness, which was the largest food safety case fine ever. They're also having issues in New Jersey, seven million dollar fine for violations of child labor laws. In New York, they're having issues right now. And and in Pennsylvania, there there's a lawsuit in two thousand twenty one. About scheduling, unreliable scheduling practices, so. I'm concerned, you say you have a representative for Chipotle here, right, not a franchise owner that's part of our neighborhood or part of our community. I don't believe really that Chipotle would be a good faith partner for our community. So it's, do we want it and are we allowed to have it? So we can talk about are we allowed, and I know that's probably why we're supposed to do. But I'm going to come up a little higher and ask if our community wants Chipotle here when there's another one in West Whiteland two miles away.
And that's fair enough, that is the obligation you guys have for your community, and I'm here thinking about this, we do partner with that. You know, I can't tell you what you've just stated or recognized. Not where we are, where we are is that we're in the business. Ross dress, relax, just like anything you do, festival acts, all for some. For the landlord, there are tenants, we try to do the best we can for the community by providing a place for that. And also holding it through the standard, you know, but again, they are responsible for their own differences.
Lindsay, we had this discussion a long time ago, with Target being just two miles down the road from the one that we have here now. And look at it, it's packed.
Sure.
So, but there's an answer.
Yeah.
Go ahead, why don't you guys present your plans, I mean, you guys drafted them up, might as well.
Said the guy who drives forty minutes for Chipotle.
So this is concept A.
There'd be very similar concepts, but this is this is up against Eagleview Boulevard. Two thousand three hundred and twenty five square foot building with the Chipotle lane, pickup lane. There's a three hundred square foot patio area between that the ADA parking in blue and the building. Proud for seating, twenty six parking spaces, again, this is a over like an annex parking lot. That was just in the front of the, front of the store that was being unused. Access to the site will be via the the two way curb cut off the the. I I call it a ring road that circulates around the whole parking lot for the shopping center. There's currently one there now, so we're just going to be shifting it over a little bit. That's pretty much the the gist of this site, if you go to the contact B.
Just a quick question, pre-steerway, what's the outside lane for? Is that just a?
That's just bypass lane.
Okay.
It's just so you don't get stuck in. You pull into that thinking you're going to do an order, no way, I can't order here. And then you have to have emergency services to be able to get around that.
And then you go to the exit site.
Or it's Westchester.
So, this is, this is essentially the same layout minus the parking. We just have that two thousand three hundred twenty square foot building, you have the three hundred foot, three hundred square foot patio area. Have the Chipotle lane, pickup lane, and the bypass lane. Only difference with this is instead of proposing new parking spaces. Around the building, it'll utilize parking spaces that are already part of the overall parking lot. And there is a.
Technically, the first proposal is doing the same thing, you just change where the parking spaces are.
Exactly.
Because there are parking spaces where you're putting a restaurant in.
Dan, would that turn out to be like a Freddy's and or Chick-fil-A then, would they have like conditional sharing of parking spots, so then they would meet the ordinance?
So 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 ultimately here, this is classified as a shopping center. So this is different from Chick-fil-A, Freddy's, which isn't part of a shopping center. So that that typically how it happens is you end up having kind of a shared parking analysis for the whole center is what what occurs. For this, and I mean, so what they're actually showing right now is if sketch A, they're having a net decrease in seventeen parking spaces. And sketch B, they're actually removing a net decrease sixty three parking spaces. Is what is what what actually occurs between between the two.
Oh, from the whole entire.
From the whole, the whole set center for for what they're end up doing, they they end up. A, they're because they're able to put back in parking spaces there, they're only losing seventeen, but if they move it down to B. They're basically losing sixty three spaces is what they what they what they what they what they need to make that work.
Would they still meet ordinance?
No, so so ultimately, they're not meeting the the ordinance requirements or the the, they're not meeting the. Parking requirements as defined in nineteen eighty seven conditional use decision in order that was that was done. So they're, they they would be in violation of that, but they have to go back through here. If this was to proceed forward and open that conditional use hearing back up and have a new conditional use hearing. And present testimony that they they feel that the shopping center is overparked and. And that it it can, it can accommodate and that decrease sixty three spaces if it's doing sketch number B. So they would present that data and say, hey, look, look what's, look what we're using in this based upon our, they do a study counts. And show us even during the peak times and on the the day before Thanksgiving and whatever the whatever the peak grocery store time is. Hey, we don't ever, we don't ever use these spaces, and that's what they would have to present.
And I just want to identify the numbers, the the prior conditional use decision permitted a parking space calculation of five spaces. For one thousand square feet gross floor area. The the shopping center right now is nine six thousand one hundred ten square feet, so under the calculation, there'd be. Four hundred eighty one spaces required, there was a survey done, currently there are four fifty eight. So right now, we're under that that number, so. Any reduction, we're going to have to go before the zone here for. To for for barriers to increase the the.
It's 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 a little complicated here too, and stuff that you probably don't need to get bogged down in the details for here. But the the shopping center is, the shopping center parcel is actually two, two lots. Doing that, if you recall, if you've been around for a while, we used to have the Rico Cinema located there on the one side. And but the the Wawa, which is the far right corner there, that's not part of the shopping center, neither is McDonald's up front. Or the Rite Aid and the automotive shop are not part of, are not part of the shopping center. So the shopping center, when it was originally approved, was incorporated some of it. There's just been modifications to that process that would need to be cleaned up through the conditional use hearing, so. It's a little complicated about what was previously approved and what the current, what currently is listed as a shopping center that. Would need to be sorted out during during this conditional use process if it was to go forward. I think from your guys' sake here, that's something for the staff and and the consultants to kind of work through those details with. I think yours, I think your feedback here right now is it's something that you feel is necessary or feel is 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 a is a good addition or not to to the. To the township, a couple of things, there are key things, I think, and maybe I'll jump at the gun here, but talk about is the setbacks, because that's a really big issue. That I think is important to talk about, about what the shopping center setbacks were were required to have and what you're proposing, what's going to occur. For 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 these applications, that's kind of one of the big, one of the bigger issues.
So on on concept A, there's a two hundred foot front yard setback and a hundred foot side yard setback. On concept A, obviously, we're in both of them, it's just unavoidable where that parking lot is located. On concept B, we were able to get out of the two hundred foot front yard setback. Far, far back, exactly, and then that's the hundred yard setback, hundred, hundred setback.
I don't think you're correct, that's that's the two, you're you're in front of the two hundred foot setback, according to the the approved subdivision plan. Line that Tara's running across right now, you're outside your front yard, they actually had that shown. Two hundred feet measured from Eagleview Boulevard through the neighboring lot, and they showed that two hundred foot setback, so you're you're not meeting your two hundred foot setback.
We just offset the front yard right away setback, two hundred feet, and it, the front yard actually turns up, so as you, as that setback goes up. Turns, it goes up to the north or or south, whatever direction it was, it goes up towards where the old lot is, and connects with the hundred foot, which is there. So so that's why the the, that's why you're at a two hundred foot, you're actually technically in the hundred foot side yard setback.
Okay. I I I mean, the gist of it is they they the approved ninety seven, eighty seven plan showed a two hundred foot setback, and you're not meeting it. For the least of conditional use plan from the eighty seven for either applications here for this, but. This one was basically is further tucked back behind the bank and everything else, the other one is front and center along along Eagleview Boulevard. And they would need relief related to that setback setback requirement here, I actually think we're pushing them to shoving the relief for either either application for this. But uh, that's something that was, has been in the ordinance for front yard setbacks for two hundred feet for shopping centers since the existence of the. Oh, do you think they they also have in sketch A, if you're going to go back to sketch A, you have actually improvements out into the right of way. You actually literally have your travel lane, there's a dash line cutting through there, and you have improvements right up against the edge of the sidewalk. So you're basically putting in part of the travel lane here within the public right of way. Which typically isn't something we 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 like to see. So that that right of way is intended for use of of road winding.
Yeah.
Utilities or whatever else needs to be run through that, now they're using that portions of the right of way in sketch A. To to incorporate part of their, to get their adequate widths and requirements for travel rates.
Would, under this scheme too, I mean, would there be any provisions to keep headlights from cars in the Chipotle shining in the upcoming traffic heading east on Eagleview?
You could scream with landscaping there.
The room for landscaping?
Oh, we could, we can, we can modify that, look like twist it a little bit to get out of there and then put some plantings. This is just a concept plan.
Right, I I mean, you guys came to us and are just looking for opinion. I'll be honest with you, there's nothing I see of this plans either of. B is like, just, you're in the middle of a parking lot, and this is. Excuse me, you're trying to shove ten pounds in a five pound bag. Isn't there other land available that Chipotle would be wanting to look at that would be more suitable and? I I just don't like this idea in this shopping center, I'll be honest with you.
I'm with you, the first thought I had was the Rossi property, I don't know if it's actually going to be developed, the Rossi trap where the. That seems like a better, because it's completely undeveloped, you could plan it out correctly.
I'm thinking of Moody's too, which was the bank turned restaurant in a location that was already existing, so. Is there a bank that?
Right there.
There's a million banks.
Right there, seriously, that one's.
Which one?
Well, it's not, that's well as far though.
Zip in one hundred?
Oh, right here, right here.
I don't think they're looking for that, but.
Right, understand.
Yes.
So as much as we can, hey, we recommend, if only goes here or there. Hopefully here it's not bad, that's not the.
Right, I mean, that's that's my opinion, and the other members of the board.
So I guess if we were, if we were taking a vote as to who was in favor of this or not, right?
Or not, yes.
I I would also ask if you're, you know, if it wasn't Chipotle, are you looking as the owner of the shopping center to utilize your space? To get a new, you know, to earn money, is that part of this, and Chipotle was somebody who you could do that with? So are you looking to maximize your space as the owner of the shopping center to create more income for yourself? Through a restaurant, fast food, whatever.
Yes, we are in the business of improving our centers. Our livelihood, so Chipotle asking us for this, we evaluated to see if we could, what the overall would be, and if it would benefit our shopping center. As well as what we're doing for our bills, so that's what we're going to vote, if another user came. Duncan Don or anybody else, you know, that came in and had a similar type of use that wanted it, we will evaluate the same way. If we had vacancy inside the center, where we didn't have to build, the building is extremely expensive right now. You know, for us, it's not as possible. We're always having a tenant leaving, we know he's leaving, we're always trying to do that first. We don't necessarily need to add this specifically because this product cannot put in on. You know, function this for it. Center's too big to do. Bring to you guys and say, given the amount of work that we need to be. Whether or not including who would be, A, going to have a Chipotle. Here in this location and B, one more of us through it, so. I've heard you guys say some comments, like, yes, that would be. Maybe we want you in the community, we want you here, maybe we want you here, we won't work with it. I would love to hear you guys say, yeah, please bring it forward and work through it with us, we'd like this location, that location on the center, but hopefully. Can I ask a question about your 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 shopping center, can you go and bring that baby piece in there?
I don't have, well, it's out of my head right now, but I don't have one other one that's Chipotle.
Regardless of Chipotle, I guess I'm just wondering here from a community member here of a shopping center, we obviously. The shopping center serves the the residents within the community here, and and I think it'd be better, because the township has ability to work with you guys. To make sure, but if you if you had vacancies and you were looking to bring another tenant in, help. Bring customers to this shopping center to help help improve the shopping center and help improve the the uses that are there now. My experience has been is that has done, it's been a successful shopping center here, and I know you got held in the. For a certain period of time here, but I don't recall over the years that you've had a lot of vacancies within that, within that center. I think it does very well, most of our centers do not have a lot of vacancies, they have, if they have vacancies. What we're experiencing is the guys that are going from twenty two thousand square feet down to seventeen thousand, so we have a little trouble filling the twenty twos. And we try and find the guys who will fit the two or three of them there, that's kind of the experience we're having right now, if any of our centers experience a vacancy for. Although we're not, we tend to only carry our vacancies for about maybe four months at the maximum, and that's typically the time for when we can get the property back. Renovated for the new guy to go in, obviously vacancies hurt everybody, and we get our leads through people calling us and saying, we want to meet your center. Or from the community contact, we'll have the planning members sometimes call us and say, so and so contacted me, and they're moving their space, would you mind calling? So I mean, we are very community oriented, and that's why we're successful.
I think there are two vacancies currently. Hallmark and my.
So we have permits for renovations.
Okay.
Dennis, I'm kind of like on board with you, but I also don't like to be the person to say no, and then not be like. What what what's an alternative, I mean, you look at the aerial, I mean, it's 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 pretty cruddy looking spot, I mean. You know, I, I'm not sure what could go in there, besides.
I like it, I like it the way it is.
You know? To talk about that, I mean, I think site A over in the corner there, because of the setbacks, is really, really difficult to do anything. But the parking lot area, the parking lot is underutilized, it seems. The biggest problem is the size of those Chipotle's and how much space they take up. That takes away so many additional spaces. And then there's the whole question of whether or not it's fast food. I mean, I don't know if there's some other kind of business you could stick in there that doesn't take up as much space. The whole rates, but.
Well, in the middle, in the middle of the parking lot, excuse me, you've got pedestrians, you're gonna have people walking all through, going this way and.
If they fill those.
And now with Chipotle, and in and out of the shopping center. So now you're causing a hazard with people and cars.
That's a good point, well, because your parking spaces aren't clearly delineated to be with Chipotle. You could park at the Giant and then walk over quick and get a.
Right.
Burrito.
Exactly.
And now you're walking through the entire parking lot as opposed to just just like with Chick-fil-A where there's thirty parking spaces right around the restaurant.
So a lot of kids going in and out of that pond, whatever, whenever it is over here.
What what about in that space, putting like a regular dining? I just have to say, as an Exton resident, who's been here my whole life, Exton does not have great restaurants. Pretty disappointing. How about a great restaurant? Where you can, people can actually go and get really good food and have a good chef in there, and you don't need to have a circle around it. And we could, you know, have, I mean, my family and friends of mine, we we drive to Phoenixville for a good meal, or we go to Westchester, it'd be really great to have a great restaurant right there that we could be proud of, and we could actually say, hey, there's some really great restaurants in Exton, and you don't, if it wasn't a fast food restaurant, you know, it could be a draw. You know, and I'm not talking about a chain like, you know, one of these sort of pseudo Mexican restaurants, I'm talking about like a good really good restaurant, you know, go find, there's lots of there's lots of great restaurants in Philly, and they come out, we're friends with Restaurant Alba in Melbourne, the owners. It's a family amazing restaurant, he, you know, his family had it in Philadelphia, and then he expanded, and when he, when he finally went for it, they're like a super top rated little restaurant right now, and doesn't take a lot of space, people can go.
But that's not what's on the board too, you know?
But you know what, it's not only board, but he's, he he you you came for us for recommendations.
Right.
We are the community.
Yeah.
He wanted community feedback. I'm giving him community feedback, that's all.
I I kind of agree with you though, I think that's a better option myself.
Yeah, I'm not interested in seeing another, you know, owned from afar quasi-fast food restaurant, you know, another draw from the turnpike. I'm not interested in that, my opinion.
Okay, well, at that, we all have had our opinion. Do we have anybody in the audience or online that has any comments? I'm wondering, the best way to do this would be to take a poll down the line is all I know, because yeah, I have no recommendation, you guys are just looking for our opinion, so we'll give you our opinion.
Just keep in mind, there's a lot of hurt, there's a lot of hurdles, and and all these are.
Okay, so.
I don't see it working out of each shot.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't see it either.
Okay.
I'm a no.
Nope.
No.
No.
Sorry, guys, we're giving you our honest opinion. There's one, two, three, four, eight, nine of us here in the community. So that's our opinion. Yeah, thank you. It's something to look at. I never would have thought anybody would even thought about doing what you guys were gonna try to do, so.
If it ever stops raining, and the thing I see is paving truck there behind in this would be lot number one. I'm hoping you're going to do something with the entrance closest to.
All right. Well.
In the mind, in the plan.
So that's actually handled by a different division in my company. But what we do is we typically allocate a certain amount of funds to annualize in the fall and in the spring addressed areas that we need to put more of beds, so if you're seeing the paving truck there, that means it's going probably on the half-spot, they're not, we don't typically go through, no, repeat the entire section, typically about make big chunks of areas that are vacant, because then we can spread money out, keep maintenance going. We have to wait to know and repeat everything, that's, you know, over or more than a million a year, and we don't get to it fast enough. So we'd rather angle those smaller areas, so you go run the big piles, sort of things smooth and black. I mean, I think most people think of the road, but the other centers should wait and put a million dollars with the asphalt down, and you gotta drive over roof graders. We don't have that.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any business, other business for the planning commission this evening? Good or bad opinions? Okay, announcements. Ten ten, Board of Supervisors, seven thirty. All items are subject to change, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will so move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming out. It was an interesting evening.